Through those verbs or through that sentence, excuse me. If there's further revision, the board would like to do, we can absolutely further to revise those sentences to meet what the board is after.
So my concern was we're in the second paragraph and it says overnight chaperones or not a parent or guardian. I disagree with that because there are parents and guardians who could be possibly pedophiles addicted to porn just because you're a parent. Doesn't mean that. You cannot abuse a child. So I truly believe that anybody who is going to be unsupervised with a child, whether they are a parent or guardian. Needs to be fingerprinted and background checked and out of state. Because we have lots of uh parents, you know. Families or maybe the dad lives in Tennessee and the mom lives here and they come back and forth and just for the protection of the child. Any single person, whether they are a parent and grandparent. You know, a guardian, they need to be fingerprinted and background checked out of state. Um, that's just the least we can do to protect the child. Um, I agree Scott made the comment last time like, oh, you mean you want to fingerprint everybody that? You know, comes in for a storyline. You know, presentation or Valentine's Day cupcakes. No, not if they're not if the teachers in there. But if anybody is going overnight with a child. They need to be fingerprinted. So I would, I'll go ahead.
So with that paragraph, then it could, if it just said overnight chaperones and removed two are not apparent guardian grandparent. If you remove that, so if it said overnight chaperones or any individual who will have any unsupervised access to students will be required to complete. A fingerprinted base background check.
Yeah, just crossing out who are not apparent guardian or grandparent.
We could strike that. Do you have other change to it?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Madam Chair, yeah. So could we then just do an acceptance? With striking that, I mean, that's a simple line or do you want to wait and bring it back? You want a motion or do you want to wait and bring it back?
Jay, do you think that's just, is it a simple? Strike through and we can, since this is the second reading, then that was, it seems like that would be covered under. Unsupervised for anybody and everybody.
Yeah, we would just make a motion to, if the board wanted to, the motion would be to approve with that revision to the policy. So you'd make that piece. There was one other revision. I just want to make sure the board knows about before we do vote. Or before a motion was to go forward if the board chose to do that. Uh, and that is on towards the end of it and it is on page six and seven. And we had put some appeal language in there and the ask was to remove an appeal determination and crossing out the from O D E. And crossing out the of public instruction as contested under the uh O R S numbers to make sure that where it read was. A subject individual may appeal a determination that prevents employment or eligibility to contract with the district to the superintendent. So stopping there, so it comes to our superintendent on an appeal. So that's where we heard last time to make sure it's not going above our superintendent, but to our superintendent to hear that appeal. So that's where you'll see the strike there and then also the strike below that. On page seven, to read a volunteer may appeal a determination from fingerprint based criminal records checks. That prevent the ability to volunteer with the district to the superintendent. And again, crossing out the O D E and public instruction to make sure it goes to our superintendent, not above our superintendent in that. And that's where Scott in particular was talking about, just in case some something looked wrong or there was the wrong. He referenced in the last meeting, there were multiple Scott Coopers. And he didn't want that wrong name to come back and prohibit someone. So wanting that appeal process here to our superintendent to be able to review if there was something that was a mistake.
Well, Madam Chair, I motion to adopt. Policy uh G C B A slash G D D A criminal records checks and. Fingerprinting with crossing out. Who are not apparent guardian, grandparent on page four. And the changes to page six or seven.
Second. Just to clarify, leaving what is on six and seven, right? Right, the way it's out, yeah, right now. Alright, so we have a motion on the table. To approve with revision on page four, G C D A slash G D D A um and the revision on page four. We will be crossing out parents slash guardians slash grandparent. To make it read overnight chaperones who are not, who are. Oh, sorry, overnight chaperones or any individual, correct? Alright, any discussion? Alright, all in favor of approving this with the revision, raise your hand. All opposed? Okay.
Thank you. The second one that two point two, you'll notice it's a, it's a deletion. Where that exists in here is two point two, the deletion in there. Was what was put into two point one two. So what they did is they took the. Criminal records check that A R and they put it within the policy itself. So there wasn't a separate A R. That the particular deletion here, um Cheyenne mentioned there was a double R in there in the last one. It's referenced in this one that's uh proposed to be deleted. So with that, the deletion of this one. Would then remove that one and make this policy that was just adopted by the board as the governing policy for fingerprinting background checks.
Madam Chair, um I motion to delete G C D A, G D D A dash A R.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to delete G C D A slash G D D A slash dash A R. And a second, do we have any discussion? Alright, um voting all in favor of um approving this, raise your hand. All opposed? Alright, that's passed, thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, we are going to move. Two point, two point three and two point, two point four to pull line up so we can move those. Oh, that was Anna. Okay, sorry, Anna. Okay, so moving on to Dr. Hop.
Yeah, uh Leland is out to speak, so I get a cover for uh these policies. This first one, B B C A, he presented on October seventh. Um, there were no revisions, no suggestions from the board, so it's just back for um adoptions. This one. Uh, the, the new policy is due to House Bill thirty five eighty four that requires some um electronic.
Um, Joel, I had a question on this.
Yeah.
One, um, in the very first where it says safety threat action means a lockdown. Secure shelter or evacuation that A is initiated by a school in response to a safety threat. And B is not a planned drill. The definition of safety threat action still does not match the statute.
Okay.
Statue defines it as a lockdown, lockout, shelter in place or evacuation.
Okay.
And if there is. Like anybody's hurt or something and our policy does not match the statute, that could be a problem.
Yeah, what we can do is we can take this back to um, Leland's our, our director of safety, so we can take it back and, and he can adjust the wording.
Yeah, it's O R S three, three, nine dash three. I'm sorry, three, three, nine point three, two, four. It's where it doesn't match.
Okay. Yep, we can take this one back, uh, really to adjust that wording.
Or, I mean, I guess we could adopt it if the wording is adjusted or bring it back. I don't know how it should.
Sounds like we need to put lockout.
Yeah, there's some interesting.
So it, it means lockdown comma lockout, secure shelter in place or evacuation. That's like the.
There's, there's some interesting on this, on this next policy, if, if um. The intent was to update the language to match the um standard response protocol, which is up there on our, our green sign, so. Uh, I really would want Leland, uh, he's been super involved in, in getting this together, so I really want him to weigh in, uh, if you guys are good at that.
Yeah.
So put this on, on hold and we can bring this back in November when we do the other two policies that we moved as well. We'll just make sure those, those are right.
I had another question on this, but O R S two.
The draft? Yeah.
Yeah, on this.
On the next policy, okay.
Next one, I'm listening on the next.
E B C B.
E B C B, um, I do have an update on this one. Uh, Leland did present this October seventh. Um, the board asked to, as you can see in your uh packet, the yellow phrasing. Um, particularly one that says instruction on an emergency procedure shall be conducted for at least thirty minutes each school month. That had been uh removed. Uh, the board asked that we ask O S B A why that was, did. And it says, um, the respondent said that was an error. The paragraph should uh have been included, will be, will be added. So we added that in there. So that's back in there. Um, the other additions here, uh, that the first emergency evacuation drill shall be conducted within ten days. At the beginning of classes, um, that's definitely great policy language, best practice. We want kids within those first ten days to be having those. Um, those drills. So that's an addition in there as well as uh you'll see under that safety paragraph, safety threat section. We talk about the language that is cut out throughout the district, though you'll see these green signs. So, um, if the language is off, then we definitely, I, I would recommend we wait for Leland. Um, have him weigh in on this and make sure that's exactly uh everything aligns.
Yeah, the words being struck in safety threats is actually what the statute says. I don't know why they're being removed.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll check because it says this is all related to a house bill thirty five eighty four. Um, so. We can, uh, we can get Leland to weigh in on that to make sure we're all aligned.
Okay.
Shane, did you say you had something else?
Yeah, um, O R S three, three, six, um, point oh, seven, one states a school. A may drill, uh, earthquake emergency response procedures in addition to drop, cover and hold on. Um, when the school determines based on evaluation of specific engineering and structural issues related to a building. That drop, cover and hold on may not be the most effective earthquake emergency response procedure to prevent. Or limit injury or loss of life. We need to use the exact language. That's not in our exact language and that's in the statute, like the loss of life because. We have old buildings like the middle school and that's going to put us in a predicament if we're not using.
Exact language. Awesome. Okay, well, we'll have Leland dig into all of this and get back to you at that November board meeting.
So did you get the, what I was referencing?
I said O R S three, three, six, seven, oh, seven.
Those seven ones.
Oh, seven one.
Just said it matches like the loss of life.
Actually, loss of life.
Just out of curiosity, Joel, do these go to like Melinda or the district's attorney for? I mean, these language matches, because it seems like we should. We're going to go off of house bills and there is.
Yeah.
None of us, like, I could be wrong, but none of us have a law background. And so it's like trying to read all these O R Ss and trying to figure out if our language matches them. Is there a way that maybe these could actually go through an attorney? Like Melinda or, I don't know, there's a team, can high desert E S D actually match, because?
Yeah.
I don't know that that should even be Leland or Anna or Jay's job to have to go find the O R Ss, read them. And make sure the language that O S B A gave us matches the statute. Is there a way that we might be able to have the language looked at by? Somebody within a legal team for the district?
Yeah, I think that'd be a great step. I, I, you know, Spencer, I think talked a little bit about their policy where these, you know, a lot of these policy changes come from. The legislature changes some house bill or, or whatever, and then O S B A takes a crack at it. But I think adding in that extra layer of, you know, E S D legal counsel or di- the district's legal counsel. Because as, as someone who sometimes just gets these policies, I, I have that same thing where I, I don't have a law degree.
Right.
Um, so I wouldn't want to take out language or add language that would then um.
That would be my concern, like, can we just remove like language out of the statute and, and adopt? And then it be plausible or, you know, upheld in a court of law or like where does that line? So I would, I, I would like to see that maybe somebody with that background, because these could easily be. Accepted or.
Without knowing.
Right, without knowing that, oh, the defendant can actually have the, yeah, so it's just.
Yeah, and I think I.
That's an option.
Having a lawyer look over things just to, to give their two cents and suggest revision, I think is always, always a good practice. So adding those extra layers, I think makes a lot of sense.
Okay, well, is there a reason that Melinda doesn't attend these policy meetings because she is our attorney?
Um.
And so it's fairly difficult, like, just like the one she brought up. Last time about this, this school district, because a lot of like O S B A and high desert E S D, they're all out to protect the district. But I see a lot of the policies wording and the way that things are wordsmith are not always out to protect the student. So like, for example, that fingerprinting one. That we read last time, Kirk County School District has a permission slip that kind of like defaults them from any responsibility. So it's always protecting the district. So it's a good idea when we adopt these to have, you know, Melinda or an attorney present. And then I, not that I want to pump up Ben Lapine or Portland, but a lot of other districts, including Bend. Uh, and Portland, I think Ben Lapine gives fourteen days and Portland gives twenty one days. So before a district or a company policies come to a board, they put those policies out to the public. So that any public can comment on them. Or like help make revisions or whatever, like do the same thing, like make sure the statutes are lining up. Because it seems like a lot of these policies have been blindly adopted.
Yeah.
And O S B A doesn't stand behind it. So we're paying them tens of thousands of dollars and they, it's almost like we need a lawyer to protect us from O S B A. I, it, the whole thing is just such a joke. And so we have to have a better, we have to have better procedures in place to protect.
I think one thing we can definitely do, I've heard a lot of good ideas, is um come back to the board with uh some kind of. Enhanced protocols and procedures around adopting policies. It sounds like that's a, a desire of the board. Um, trying to answer your question, I, I, not knowing that it's a desire of the board for, for our district's attorney to be here. I, I think she'd be more than willing to come and, come and weigh in. So I think maybe in the next month or so, we can de- develop some sort of procedure of. Here's what we do with, with policies, um, because it sounds like that's a, a priority of the board to have that kind of fleshed out a little bit more.
We just got so many coming down.
There's a lot.
I mean, some of these, I mean, you can see the next one references, I mean, reading all of these, it's like. I don't even know if, you know, they all pertain to this type. And then you got to read them all and some of them are short and some of them are pages and so it's a lot.
Yeah, the Oregon legislature seems to be, you're putting out more legislation that then impacts schools. That then starts this kind of backlog. So as, as we can see, I want to say. It was in October and April, I think we have a backlog of about fifty five that are based on legislation. So it puts, um. We don't want to push anything through or adopt things blindly. So I think it is a really good idea, trying to have a, a, a good process in place. So that everyone at this table and beyond feels comfortable with what we're adopting. Because as Spencer was talking, my, you know, my biggest takeaway was this is the board's number one job is policy. And if you don't agree with the wording, then that, that's, that's great. That's what, that's what you're in these chairs for, is to give it, you know. Listen to your constituents, hear the, hear, you know, what's legal and then say, hey, here's applying the local context to that. I think is exactly why you guys are in those chairs. So, um, so that's something that uh Dr. Skinner and I can work on and bring back some sort of. Um, enhanced policy procedures so that everyone's feeling comfortable with these policies.
Joel, on that last one, E B C B, did you mention a house bill or would, or did you not?
Yeah, but the house bill is actually connected with the E B C A.
Okay.
E B C B, um.
I just want to make sure that I didn't miss that.
It just said O S B A recommend those changes and then said. That language they initially took out should have been in there.
Okay, thank you. Um, I G B A F. Oh.
Yeah.
Welcome. For the breathing.
Yeah, good evening, guys.
Good evening, Grant.
Okay. Alright, so we got a lot, a lot of these and you got a lot of me, so. Okay, so um, two point, two point seven, I G B A F, special education, individualized education program. And basically that one is about uh Senate Bill seven, five, six, passed in twenty three. And the bill requires district employees who are assigned to work with students who are on I E Ps. Or five oh, four plans be invited to attend the students' I P meetings or five oh, four plan meetings.
I didn't see any changes. Am I missing? Is there no highlight, underline? I didn't have any in the.
I don't think of anything was a thirty days of first eligibility and I consider doing that.
But I didn't see like that wasn't a change. I don't understand why we're readopting this policy. What was the change? There's no highlighting, there's no underlining, there's no red, there's no blue. So I'm just trying to figure out what is changing with this policy that we are adopting.
Yeah, great question. It was there. You, you speak.
If we look under the um, down, under the references, there's two, there's an O R S. It's in blue, that's new, and then there's.
Yeah, good question.
Alright.
There are two that are all the way through and through and no black.
The ones that are all the way through, yeah.
Yes.
And that's in relation to the Senate bill.
Correct.
Because all the O A Rs are blue, so only the ones that are all. Okay, I see. Okay, got it. Okay, sorry, Grant.
No, no, you're, you're good.
No, it's okay. That's why I was like, I don't know it's different. No, okay.
Board Chair, I move to adopt I G B A V as is.
Yeah.
Oh, I be, oh, mine says I, are you on the wrong one? Oh, I was looking at the original code, sorry. I G B A F as is.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion on the table to adopt I G B A F the way it stands. And a second, do we have any discussion? Alright, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Right, that one's done, thank you.
Okay, um, so I G B A F dash A R. Dash special education dash individualized education program. So it's the policy two point, two point eight. Um, this also talks about um I A's being invited to I P meetings and five oh, four. It also talks about uh individualized COVID nineteen recovery services has been deleted since supervision has sunsetted. And amended language for the recommendations.
But Grant, I had a question from um a parent within the district. I don't know what's, if I'm grasping what was told to me, it sounds like maybe pre-COVID, Joel, you may know this. High desert E S D um. Supplied or gave us cows, I don't know the right terminology, in A S D, an autism specialist. Within our district. Um, so when she saw all of these.
So pre-COVID, we had autism specialist from the E S D.
That, yeah, that was either provided by them or they came from the high desert E S D and I guess that position no longer. Comes with, I don't know if that was something like we negotiated our terms, but I just have a note on this one. She is very into the special education, um, having a child within it. So I, is that just something we could look into?
Yeah, so the physician, so that, that person no longer comes, is that the?
They haven't for a few years now. Yeah, it's a, it's a specialist.
Autism specialist.
Yeah.
COVID, yes.
Correct, so.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that.
No, okay.
And then I had a question on the back on two. Uh, under I A P meetings, if you go down through A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Is completely deleted and then the entire policy pulls language verbatim from O D E documents entitled policy and procedures. For special education and that proposed policy under, under number two with G. Uh, we are missing the entire section.
What page do you want?
For what, it's on two, two, ten, on the backside. If you go to number two under I A P meetings and go down the G is missing.
Oh, I see.
I mean, I don't see G there, is that what you're saying?
So, I'll go ahead.
So you're saying from the document, this meeting, this information was told they have a G, but we didn't carry over G.
Yeah, we didn't put G on there. Um, the district provides prior written notice to the parent upon completion of the I A P. And before implementation of the I A P, why did O S B A remove this? And wherein the policy does it discuss prior written notice regarding I A P? But I don't know why, I hope it's not a thing like the other one where O S B A says they're wrong, but they just deleted an entire section. And I don't see in policy where it says. Uh, where it discusses a prior written notice. That was my only concern on there, especially with G. I don't want to, I don't know why I still.
Can you give us, uh, you said on, that on something on the O D website, it does have a G?
Yeah.
What, what is that document we could take a look at?
Uh, it's on the, for under the document entitled policy and procedures for special education.
On the O D website?
Yeah.
So the language in this policy is taken verbatim from that document, but they don't hold G.
Yeah, they cut G off.
Which is specifying what parents' rights are, so.
And then. On three dash ten. Under the.
Yeah, I'm getting there.
In the blue.
Yeah, the brand new section.
Uh, we are still not capturing Senate Bill seven, fifty six. That all employees working with sped students must have access to the individualized education program. It seems like O S B A is, I don't know the right word, dumbing down the use of I A's. Um. And neglecting to spell out the district's responsibilities.
So you're saying the Senate bill?
Yeah, we're not capturing the language. That really puts an emphasis on I A's being part of that. And outlining the district's responsibilities. And I think Grant, that is different.
Okay.
So I had something at the end of this.
There might be one other thing, well, I think there might have been a.
Okay, so from what I can read, again, we have, we have a lot to go over, but it's abbreviated, it's school day. Or this comes from Senate Bill eight, nineteen.
Where, where are you, Justin?
Oh, I'm sorry, ten, ten, the very back page. On the abbreviated school day twelve.
Yes.
There is a timeline described within the Senate bill, but it's not carried over to our policy. And it should state that the parents sign. Like where we've got this little paragraph, like the informed and written consent, the parent should, should be the one signing, not the school. But the informed and written consent, it's spelled out, but again, it's like this is wordsmith very short. But there's an actual timeline described in Senate Bill eight, nineteen. That I think would be worth carrying over as opposed to. Kind of wordsmithing this, because it doesn't really spell out again, the parents' rights.
So, I mean, obviously, the school can't, I mean, the school can't say, hey, we're going to abbreviate your child's day, but the parents can. Is that what you're indicating?
Yeah, well, the timeline, there's a specific timeline described in Senate Bill nineteen. I didn't write it all out. But it doesn't match what we have here.
Copy of it. That's actually. There's very specific things they have to do.
But there's like steps within that, yeah.
Underneath that, I was just thinking, underneath that paragraph.
He was saying he'd like to include it and that's what you're thinking.
Well, there's a timeline to those written consent. That's in the Senate bill, but it's not in our policy.
So you could say, here's the informed written consent, and that parent, then the next paragraph, we can.
Yeah, it has a timeline of how that is supposed to be.
Yeah, it, we always would have to default to the law, so if it's Senate bill, we have to follow, but it is for the safety of everyone. That's that it's also in our policy.
Just adding that timeline to that.
Yeah, I think it has something, you know, like fourteen days, thirty day, you know, like days, so that, yeah, it's like spelled out specifically.
Yeah, sure.
So I'd rather see that in a policy if we're going to re-adopt it, a specific timeline that matches the.
So we can, we can work on that and bring it back, that's okay.
Yeah.
And I did there, I was right, there was one typo.
Okay.
Um, and you asked about having a bit, eight dash ten, I think, it's under nine A.
Yeah, yes.
Is everybody there?
Yep.
For eight dash ten, under nine, and it says. A free, appropriate education, all the rest of them on nine, ten, say, public education, public education. Public education. But I think you're missing the word.
Hmm, good catch.
Hey, just to go back on your, uh, the prior written notice, um, on two, on page two point, two, eight or six, ten. Uh, under six, C, the, the district provides families prior written notice of any changes in the I U P. Over, it's just under the amended or modified section, so that's strange. So it addresses it there. And then it also addresses the prior written notice, uh. On uh, ten, ten, and uh. Three at the top, says student does not need organ, the district provides prior written notice to the families explaining that the student does not need work and eligibility criteria. So. Prior written notice is super important, so that families know when their meetings are. Um, I definitely think we should find that G that you're talking about. Uh, but then as a, as a safeguard, and the next policy grant talks about I G B A G. It does have the procedural safeguards and lists prior written notice before, so. We, we definitely have to do that for families. That's super important. So we'll make sure it's, it's spelled out in a number of places throughout policy.
You know, on the Senate Bill, it's like specific days, like fourteen days, thirty, like it's a very.
Sounds like this needs to cook, cook a little bit, a little bit more.
Sounds good. Okay, um, two point, two point nine. I G B A G, special education procedural safeguards. And this one talks about to add language, the independent educational evaluation section, stating parents are entitled to examine their students' records. And setting a ten business day timeline to receive those.
So this is another one, that I found, there could be more, but. Like on procedural safeguard notices, like number one, if you look at the federal, that three, three, four. Three hundred point five oh four A, one and two, the federal law. It lists upon complaint and due process, which that isn't in this paragraph under number one.
O R S B A took out that language, it looks like.
But it's in the federal law, so that's, I don't know why we're removing the, the, the.
Can you tell me one more time, federal language that was removed?
So I didn't write down the whole paragraph. This is pretty close, but it's missing upon complaint and due process. They should receive the procedural safeguard notice.
I have it right here, Joel. It's three hundred point five oh four. Under, not under A, it says, general, a copy of the procedural safeguard is available to the parent or the child with a disability must be given to the parents. Only one time a school year, except that a copy must also be given to the parents.
Forgot that language.
Yeah, great. And I, I think it's customary, I don't know if it's a policy, they get procedural safeguards every, every meeting. Uh, that's how they usually start it off.
Every I E P meeting.
Five oh four, so it's in between those. That's, I got, you have to read all five of them, so they lump them together. Yeah.
Number five. Number four and five, I have questions on. O A R, uh, five eighty one, two, O A R two one nine five. The language was, the exact language was again taken out by O S B A and very general language was put in.
For, are you talking about numbers four and five on procedural safeguard?
Five, yeah.
No, under parent, the only one that has four and five is parent or adult student meeting participation.
Oh, okay, wrong.
With the bottom of.
I have so much writing on there, two dash three. Yeah, so it's very general language, um, that does not notify parents of their rights. And the O R S actually says that the district must take the steps to ensure that both parents are present. And they just put in really general language.
Well, it says if neither parent can attend, which that's, that's like not a thing. If you read. These O R Ss and O A Rs, like it's almost like, you will figure out how. A parent or guardian attends, if you read them, it, it's not like if neither can, this is what you do instead. That's not in there. So I. This again would be one that we would need legal to weigh in on, like. Cause we're missing what's entitled to the parent.
Well, it says right here that. And that under number three of O A R five eight one dash zero one five dash two make nine five. It says that, um. Uh, an I E P replacement meeting may be conducted without a parent attendance if the school district is unable to convince the parents that they should attend. The school district proceeds with an I E P meeting without a parent. The district must have a record of the attempts to.
Yeah.
Get a hold of the, like, all that language.
Like not spelled out, but you were.
Okay, so add that language, yeah.
And then the copies of correspondence must be sent to the parents, the responses received. It's just taking out all the detailed records. It's very, very specific.
Yeah, we can definitely, um, get that back, get that. I don't know if that was originally in there and O S B A took it out or they never put it in, but, okay, well, we'll make sure to get that. If I know anything about I E Ts and, um, the more documentation you have, the better. So we'll, uh, we'll make sure to get that in there.
Okay, moving on, um, two point, two point eleven. J B A A dash A R dash section five oh four dash.
Two point two ten.
Yeah, is that, I wanna read.
You're on the A R, we're on the policy. So we need J B A A.
Okay, excuse me, J B A A, section five oh four students.
So I just have some questions that, Dr. Skinner, Joel, you may be able to answer with reading this. So. In the second paragraph on here, it says the superintendent will ensure all section five oh four qualified students with disabilities are identified annually. How is that done? If a student is on a five oh four, so annually, the parents have to turn in documentation to you. Is this done like at the beginning of the school year? Is it done annually with I E P reviews? Like. How are we tracking this? What, what does annually mean? And how is this done?
Yeah, um, so a, as students throughout the year, um, get on new I E Ps for, or.
Five oh fours for various reasons.
It gets tracked through, uh, Grant and Carrie's office. So we, there's a spreadsheet of every student in the district that's on a five oh four plan.
Okay.
And at the start of every year, so in August, uh, that department emails out the wherever, whatever school they're going to. This student is on a five oh four plan, make sure you do an annual review by this date. So then they just track that each year and, uh, go through the annual renewal paperwork.
So you're saying Grant or Carrie annually emails the individual schools that says we need, because you don't review a five oh four. Is that correct? You're given a five oh four, which is from a doctor or specialist that says this student is now on a five oh four, and that follows them through college. So I'm confused. Are they resubmitting?
So a team basically led by either an administrator or a counselor, re-meets with the parents annually to determine if the accommodations are appropriate. And they can meet just like in an I E P more often. If the parent's like, hey, let's take a look, or, or the team. You know, because the accommodation's not working.
So you do all of this in August before September?
Have to, they don't have to resubmit. Let's say there's a doctor's note for A H D that was, a student submitted their eighth grade year.
Right.
They don't have to res, get a new doctor's note every year. The team, like the, the parents and the administrator and the teacher would just get together in September, say, hey. Here were the accommodations we had last year. Anything need to be changed? Uh, okay, we'll, we'll do this change. So they're not updating, they're just almost refining every year and updating, not redoing the whole plan every year.
So is this done with the parents or this is done as a district?
With the parent, yeah. Like I went to a five oh four meeting today and the parent was there. And so it also depends on when you got your five oh four. So if I was on a five oh four and it happened in January, our goal is, is that we would meet again, you know. One day before that January that we met the previous year.
Okay, so I guess then I would want to see the language updated to more or less aligned with the I E Ps. Like who attended the meetings that, cause this doesn't state anything about the parents being at meetings, once again. So and then my other question.
Team of individual.
Right, yeah. That would be, to me, the team is somebody within the district, and that was, that was my other question. It says of knowledgeable. Of individuals knowledgeable about the students. So are these teachers? Are these administrators? Because.
Could be an I A.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, could be a nurse.
Counselor, okay. And then, so when it says the meaning, the meaning of the evaluation data and placement options. So again, it doesn't seem like the parents in the way this is written are involved in those. Decisions for their students, so.
We can change that to more, I, I've, I've never heard of a parent not being involved.
Something that team of knowledgeable was meant to have.
If, if the parent wasn't there, I don't know who would.
Right, we have to have her, yeah.
Yeah, it's usually the parents, uh.
Or advocating for the five oh four.
Exactly, so I.
Okay.
I know that exists, uh, if the wording's on policy, we can definitely update that. That will just be reflective of what we're really doing.
Okay.
I had one more thing on that too, on. Two dash five.
It's like, this is only like two.
Hey, Jessica, to, to make sure, um. Parent is tricky because some students, their parents are their, their guardian or family, if we just said a guardian or family member, would that capture what you're?
Yeah, I think, you know, the same language reason, I, what is it, parent, guardian, foster parent, like those, you know, that group be listed within this. Individual novel, because I'm sure at each school, like Anna had mentioned, like it could be maybe a nurse at one and a counselor at another, or you know, there are. Different people amongst the schools who would join, but I think. A steady factor there would be a guardian parent, foster parent, whoever that student of routine.
Well, yeah, you can go.
Okay, on to the next. Okay, the two point, two point, one, one, J B A A dash A R, section five oh four.
Say anything except on, under seven, on two dash five. The O A R five eight one dash zero one five dash two three nine oh. Isn't the correct O A R. Does not say anything about the right to an impartial.
We'll page you on again.
Two point, two point, or two dash.
All the way down to seven, under district responsibilities. O A R, five eight one dash zero one five dash two three nine zero, that's not the right.
It's not the right O A R.
Is that from O S B A too? We pay them a lot of money.
So this is, this had the same thing in it, Joel, Dr. Skinner.
Yeah.
If you look on the back, discipline number two, there's parents, but not guardians. The whole slew wasn't there, but this again, is that coming from? The statute of language, or is that we're missing involving all but. You know, parents, quote unquote, a child in our district. So it, right there at the very end, it says parents, but it doesn't list guardian, foster.
Yeah, and it's funny, cause yeah, it's, it's definitely.
It's in some, but not others. And so as I read, right, the language, sometimes if you look at the statute, it does only say parent. So it could be where this matches the federal language, and we as a district would want to say, hey, we wanna add guardian, foster.
For sure.
So, um, I didn't catch the O A R, like, Cheyenne, but I did catch that just parent. But when I looked at the. Language, that's what it says in statute.
Yeah, okay. Well, good, and that, and that reflects our practice, so we'll just wanna make sure it aligns with what we're, what we're doing and.
Absolutely. Any other questions about that one?
But I do on the next one.
Good for you, excellent. Okay.
The longest amount of hours I've been to a free job.
I'm sure it is. Yeah.
So we're on.
We're on J G A B, so two point, two point twelve, use of restraint or seclusion.
I think it will change because I.
So my concern or question, or I guess this comment is on two dash five.
So page two.
Page two dot five, and there's, on the second set of twos. Or it says restraint may be imposed on a student in the district only under the following circumstances. It says one, two, one, and then on that second two. Or it says less, yeah, less restrictive interventions. This is really messy language, because it doesn't specify. It says. A staff, trained staff, volunteer and trained staff. So does that put us in a liability?
Is it the first or the second one that's?
The second under.
Seclusion and.
Less restrictive interventions would not be effective.
Through seclusion, yes.
Yes.
So first train or seclusion, she is our student by trained staff.
I mean, I don't know, I just think that the language looks messy and that it could put us in a liability, it says, oh, like if. It's a volunteer standing there, they can, are they trained or untrained or what?
If it's right here, restraint or seclusion.
Okay, there we go.
I mean, I just.
They're both saying, restraint and seclusion, both say the same thing.
Yeah, I see. So after the comment says by trained staff or other staff.
Okay.
Yeah, and then it says, on this one, it says, or volunteer. So like if you're just a parent volunteering and then, I mean, that's gonna get, that could get in really sticky situation.
Yeah, unless, you know.
Unless you're fingerprinted and.
Right, the, the only situation I can think of that we'd want. You know, if someone's volunteering on a field trip and a kid's running in a road and a car's coming, we'd want that volunteer to stop the kid from getting. Outside of that, I see no purpose that a volunteer would ever be doing anything with restraint.
It just, I mean, it just looks like, uh, leaves us open to some.
So maybe a verbiage like you just said, Dr. Skinner, like safety.
Like immediate safety tactic, because then afterwards, we would ask them technically, go through and train them on, you know, to make sure that when they. Do that next time, if it ever comes, if, if they can do that, train. So, yeah.
I have another pair.
I have, I had a couple other things. So on three dash five, there's a typo.
Yeah, we, the C P E instead of C P I.
I didn't catch that.
Yeah, we, and we, I caught that one.
Caught one. On the second sentence down, it says as required, be state, it should be by the state. So it's the second sentence down.
From the top?
Yeah, so under the yellow, it says the Kirk County School District has, CP, we should change it to I, crisis prevention.
So where you mark the I to be changed, the next sentence after that sentence, Grant, as required be, it should be by.
Oh, yeah, good catch.
And then I had a. You know, there's like the. About my writing, all over the place with arrows, uh, where. The district shall only utilize a training program for restraint is crossed out. Uh, why are we deleting this language? Is, is this an informal punishment policy, or is it a law, we cite the law? I don't know why we're.
Oh, yeah.
I think that we went with the large yellow highlighted instead of that one sentence. Cause we wanted, we liked the C P I versus.
Oh, then you mean O D E.
That was what we were, yeah, cause we only want to use one assistant.
Last time it was.
Yeah, yeah, you go to that? Okay. Okay, cool.
I think that's it.
Okay, and then. Yeah, J G A B dash A R, use of restraint or seclusion. You have questions or comments on that?
So I have some on here, on paragraph. It's on two, page two, three, paragraph seven. It uses the word intervention. Shouldn't it be incident?
See, I can agree. Strength or seclusion parameters must be invited to the meeting.
Well, I think in the statute, three, three, nine point two nine four. It says incident, and then our language says intervention.
So the statute says it?
Yeah, statute three, three, nine point two nine four.
Is this incident?
Yeah, but it's changed and. There to say intervention.
So that was one.
When you're thinking about.
And then in the same paragraph. Right.
Yeah.
So, in that. So in that same paragraph, if you go down and said that the briefing team shall include an administrator. And then at the debriefing meeting, the district shall review in its entirety, any video. Any audio or video recording. So. My only concern with this is this is kind of selective, because we only have certain places. That we have audio and video, and that it's held for so long. So I don't know what we have in place in our schools. Cause we don't have cameras and audio everywhere in our schools, we do on our buses, that's only held for so long, so. I don't know if we want to leave this so vague. I think that it would, might need to be a little bit more precise and when that can be used, because this to me says. You would have audio and video if I'm coming to contest something as a parent, and what if we don't have audio or video?
Maybe like when available.
Something, maybe, there needs to be terminology, cuz I'm sure there's been instances where parents are like, oh, just review the video. Well, we actually don't have any in that room, or you know, that hallway, or what have you. So I just thought maybe that might be when available.
Yeah, when when available. Um and there is policy for when we're available. Um and there is policy, I know on at least bus videos around how long we keep these videos.
But I don't know that we have, at least that I've seen being on the board, that we've done any for schools. The buildings themselves, I don't even know what, you know, do, how long are those kept for, you know, we might wanna line with how long this can be. Contested, or you know what I mean, so it might stem to other policies.
Yeah, I can look, I don't know off the top of mind, I'm aware of the bus video.
That one, that's why I, that's why it jogged my memory, cuz we had to move the days to match some statute that we kept them, or to match a different. Policy for complaints or something, we had to move the timeline of how long they were kept.
Intrigued to see if there is language around school. School based surveillance video.
I don't know.
Anything else about that one?
Give Mr. Hayball a break.
I got a one, one policy break.
So this corporal uh punishment policy, uh J G A has come back to the board. Uh from last uh last meeting on the seventh. The board asked that we add this sentence in, no employee will knowingly inflict pain and suffering, so that's added in yellow. Um that initial blue section is uh I believe from the O R S. And then a couple other uh just wording changes, so that's coming back to the board with the suggestions you asked for.
So I wasn't here for the last one, but the O R S that three, three, nine point two five, it states, instead of knowingly. Their wording is willfully, that's in subsection nine, is there a reason we're not using willfully, cuz there's a drastic difference in willfully and knowingly.
Yeah, uh I don't believe, I I'm thinking back to the conversation, the the discussion around the wording. That was asked for, we could, as the board, you guys could have knowingly and willfully.
I would like to see willfully added.
No employee will, no knowingly or willfully inflict pain.
So I don't have anything else, that's what the, this O R S references, it's not, it's not knowingly, it's willfully, so you guys. It sounds like maybe the last session you guys asked for knowingly, so if that's the case, I would add. Knowingly and willfully, to match the statute.
Yeah, willing knowingly was asked of us. It was asked, so we could add the willfully on, just tack that on, yeah.
And then can we adopt that with the changes?
Just to make sure I get this right. Knowingly and willfully, or knowingly or will.
I think it should be.
I think it should be.
Alright, it's an and.
Well, it probably, then we want an or, cuz you don't wanna knowingly or willfully.
We could say and slash or.
Okay, I think that would be better, no employee will knowingly and or. Willfully inflict pain and suffering.
I think that's a really good reasonable thing to have it.
Cause that means you would, you could. Do willfully, you could do it knowingly, or you could do them together, and it covers them all.
All of it, yeah.
And or, and slash or.
Yeah, yes, both words.
Amy, I made sure to get that one clear for you.
Oh, thank you.
I'm not sure, I'd like the motion to adopt. Policy J G A with the changes knowingly and or willfully. Being changed.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to pass J G A with the addition of the word. And or willfully. Inflict pain and suffering, but we still live there. Um do we have any more discussion? Alright, um all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Thank you.
I didn't ever leave. Okay, so first one out of eleven for first reading. Uh two point two point fifteen E B B A, and it says first aid. And uh they wanna delete this policy, because they want this policy to be included in a new policy called E B C.
So Brian, I have a question. They're so far spread apart, but then this, I circled this section in first aid versus like. A fifth paragraph down, the designating employees, where it talks about coaches, and you know, each team shall have.
First aid cards.
You know, consists no less of six persons, it has all of this about coaches, but I don't see that. We're deleting this to add it to that other policy.
E B C, yeah.
And there's nothing in there about coaches, so I think. We can't delete this unless we're going to transfer, we gotta have coaches have first aid cards. Um I don't know where the number of students comes from. I mean, I'm fine with all of the verbiage it has, that just shows, it says that if you have a varsity J V, you know, freshman, each co. Coach on each team must be certified, that seems adequate.
Sure.
You know, there's. This is not in that other policy, so before we delete this one.
We wanna add.
I wanna make sure that that information is transferred over. And then. What was the one it's moving to?
E B C.
If there's one O R S. That. Okay, so when I was reading it, the O R S, this thirty point eight hundred. It's still. In legal reference, and I might have missed it with the numbers, but I didn't see that one referenced on.
The new policy.
Policy. So I'd like to not delete this until this is put in.
To the other one.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, I could have missed it, we were doing a lot of. I just wanna make sure that that carries over, cuz it seemed like the rest of it transferred over.
Okay.
In one way, shape, or.
I had one other. Question on that. Um and paragraph five. I am at the very bottom, it says names of the designated employees will be posted, where will they be posted?
Same paragraph.
Same paragraph.
Just that last sentence of it.
And then I had a question about the after school clubs.
Names of the designated employees that are like first aid CPR certified or?
It says names of the designated employees will be posted, where will they be posted at?
Yeah, good question.
And this could carry over to that other policy that we're not looking at yet? So, but it's just, there's just stuff not specific.
I'll I'll check into your question, and I'll double check in the next policy to see. If this does carry over, or if it doesn't, we'll add it and we can bring it back, of course.
And and like for clubs, cuz we have all, we have thirty after school clubs, right, Joel, thirty?
But yeah, lots.
Between the middle and the high school.
So would this need to apply to those, I mean, do they also have someone that is? I'm assuming first aid or CPR certified? Yeah, so there's. Jennifer asked this, and this is, we can ask this out loud too, just to make sure, but. The understanding is. From what I gathered, is there certain individuals that are CPR trained in the building? Not every teacher, staff member, administrator is, isn't?
Correct, there's a ratio that uh each school has to meet a percentage, and I don't know, like the percentage of staff must be trained, not. Every single staff.
That go off of like enrollment numbers, like you have nine hundred kids and you need. Well, the sports one is specific to kids, that's why I was wondering, like, are the schools set up that way?
We can pull that information, I just know there's a ratio, I don't know what it's, I don't know what it's based off of.
Okay, yeah.
You would assume. That whoever is teaching the club. Would be. We'd assume that.
Yeah.
But I. We need to make sure we put it in here, because there could be chess club, and maybe they're not, and then we can't have chess club until they get, you know. We just would wanna make sure if that's what we're saying, then anyone that has.
It talks about in the policy.
Oh, good.
About like, you know, one coach has to be certified per team or.
Yeah, and then the. It's, it seems like it'd be best practice to make sure.
Cause this is specific to Joel, it says at least one staff member with a current first aid card for every students in. Every sixty students enrolled, or an emergency response team per building, so this is very specific. Administrators.
And I think it's, it's either grants department or Kerry's department tracks, tracks that. Uh and then we offer first aid training classes on various P D days throughout the year. Um so and and I know they track it, cuz they're always like, hey, we need. We need.
We need you. So I just like to make sure this transfers over, since we're already following it, it sounds like anyways, that this transfers over, cuz we didn't get the policy that this is. We're deleting because that one's replacing, we don't have them together, so it's like to make sure they go together.
Yeah, that makes, makes sense. Okay, the next one is the. The new, well. It's page two point two point fifteen, and it's student health services, and it's like the new E B B A.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. Yeah, why they?
Lots of questions on this.
Did you want some water, Grant?
My first question goes down to number two. Uh on the first page, one dash three. Refer to available communicable diseases prevention and a management plan that includes school level protocols, so. The school based health centers that were put on school property. Allows for students to access such things as puberty blockers, birth control. Condoms. By law. At the age of twelve without parental consent, so when they're. Putting in their prevention, there's no specifics, like does that include the abortion pill, does that include sex hormones? Puberty blockers. Um does it include contraception? Because you. The. Student based health centers, because they're on school property. Can have access to your child at any time, and we are paying, or the Creek County Health Department is paying for one of our nurses part time. So with this policy. It says in here that it leaves access for them to go to health and social service agencies, public or private, so. Do we bring best care into the school based health centers? To offer transgender counseling? Or do we bring in anybody from the health department to offer abortion services? And with the age of consent being twelve, if my twelve year old goes in. And is pregnant and takes an abortion pill and has a reaction, because maybe a body part gets left in them. And they go septic, I would never have a clue, because it's forbidden by state law for me to know. So this is a very, this is dangerous, and I don't really know how to separate law. But I mean, this is just so ludicrous. Because if a twelve year old comes in pregnant, somebody ought to be calling the cops. Because I guarantee you, it's probably a pedophile or an older man. So all of this stuff is wordsmithed. To protect pedophiles. And I have so many questions on this, and I know it's just the first reading, but there is no way. That I am comfortable. It doesn't say, it doesn't even reference the age of consent for a child is twelve.
You're referring to line two, like communicable diseases.
So I. We're on E B B A infection.
Number two is communicable.
Uh prevention, management, but it's like there's no, but then you go down to six. And it says integrated school health services and education programs. When with health and social services, public and private, and we're real messy. Cause we're now, one of our nurses is now getting paid by the Creek County Health Department. So can they bring over those services, like this is a messy situation that parents need to be aware of. And I don't know if, I don't know the question to this, but like, when we sign our kids up for school. Like whatever we sign for them to go to Creek County School. Like. Do we opt out of, like, they're allowed to go to the school based health center? Um cuz it's happening, like I know it happens in Redmond and Bend and other places, those school based health centers are on school ground. And those same nurses go back and forth, so this is a very scary situation.
You think what you, like. All the points you just brought up would be very alarming, and something that we wanna make sure we have accurate information to give to you and then give to parents, so that would be something where we could. Collect everything tonight, uh concerns, questions, and then really dig in um. With that, particularly that health center, to make sure that we're reporting back to you guys, as well as anyone that's putting their kids in school, what exactly um. The law says, all all of that, we really want parents to be informed on all of this stuff.
Are you seeing there's an opt out one, is that what you said? I don't know this, but if we sign our kids. The management plan includes puberty blockers, contraception.
Finding what is prevention.
Because I see communic, yeah, disease prevention.
That's the title of what you're talking.
Yes, so I think.
It's not just prevention.
Yeah, it's the whole part.
Well, I guess because if you.
Yeah, the disease, that's how I read it, cuz that's, I have it highlighted in under, yeah, so I I read it as it was communicable disease prevention. Just, just, that's the only prevention that.
But see, we have a different policy for communicable diseases, that's where this stuff gets, the G B E B is communicable diseases. So what, why is it on student health services, if we already have a policy for?
Is it general, that is this general then?
That's, well, that's what she's thinking, but but Dr. Skinner's saying, you know, this is communicable, but we have a policy for communicable diseases, but. It's on this one.
It is referred to the protocol, yes, and then the the management plan comes right after that, so I only read it as. Just look at a prevention and management plan for. Cause we come down here and we're like, describe hearing. I think this is like a, hey, this is your overall, and then we're gonna break it down even further, and we're gonna go to. Hearing G B E B one. But maybe I'm. Do they pay, are we, but they pay in the half? I think I have a nurse, which are, that nurse isn't at the school based health center, she's at the. Middle school and the high school.
Don't we have one nurse at elementary and then one secondary?
Yeah, we've, we've kind of. Divide and conquer, if that makes.
My concern is getting to the base of the school based health centers, because they were. Set up as a ploy for social justice, which really they took away parental rights. And consent. And all sorts of crazy stuff, so whether you believe it or not, it is definitely happening. And they can also contract with whoever they want, like best care or bring in any sort of services they want. The health department, which just adopted my future, my choice, which. Is a health education put out by Planned Parenthood. So we need to at least, if we can't do anything because of law, parents need to at least be aware. That their child should not be seeing a school nurse or going to the school based health center without the parental permission. Because this is a big deal. And I've had two different parents reach out to me in which their children were then. Up at a hospital. And there was blame on the school district, because the parent had no idea what the school. And there was blame on the school district because the parent had no idea what the school and what was happening to their child. And the parent actually called me and said, where's the teacher? Where's the teacher that allowed this to happen and told my child it was okay? And that's in law. It's in law that you can call your, you know, at the school you can call the, I'm not. What I'm saying is like. Parents at least need to be aware that this is happening. And it's happening in Creek County.
Let's describe, describe. I don't see that in the next.
So with that being said, I'll write down all my specifics.
Okay, anything else on this one? I know that there was some questions about that last statement before the end of the policy. And we don't, we've agreed not to do that.
These are all first readings.
These are all just first readings, so yeah.
I did go back, cause I, I remember some of these questions earlier. So uh, once my, I met with the health department earlier this fall and confirmed. Uh, there are no abortions, gender transition surgeries, care performed at the school ba- base health work. And they said they don't provide, they don't even provide birth control there. Um, the school nurse confirmed that they do not transport students to the school-based health center. Parents would be the ones taking their student. To the health center if desired. Um, it's important to note, organ law allows children at the age of, this is organ law, age fourteen.
Can we find out? Cause I've heard, I thought it was fourteen. And then when I.
Yeah.
There's just been some confusion. If I can use Jessica Brumble for her child to the doctor and they made the doctor. Or you know, you have the, the child had to sign at the age of twelve to give the parent consent to look at their medical records. So I don't.
Those would be outside district.
Organ law is at the age of fourteen for consent or twelve? And that's what I can't figure out because in the. I thought it was.
Now that you're saying twelve, I wanna look into that.
I believe it's tiered, like at age twelve, they have some, some various rights, age fourteen, various rights. That's my understanding, but I'm not an expert.
And then I think. I just like some overall. Clarifications, I think everyone is kind of confused. If this is a general, like we are outlining what's gonna follow in other policies. Cause this specifically says like seven, so it described how hearing, vision and dental screenings are managed and or verified by required students. So you're saying seven has its own policy where we describe that? Cause there's. It's not described in here how that's happening. So I'm just confused.
I'm so concerned because these policies written by OSBA, and when you see who funds and gives money to OSBA and who they're involved with. I don't trust anything that's on this. Not one thing. And I, there's nothing like, just general, general information. Like it needs to be spelled out specifically. You know, puberty blockers, abortion pill, condoms, conscious, any sort of contraception. This is way too big. It's.
And, and I think I'd go back to, again, the board, this is, this is your number one task is to have our policies, make sure they align with, with your guys's. Because it's so vague, what he said, you don't have to adopt it. Is there anything in here that's going to legally bind us? Cause again, you got other things further down, other policies that hit all these other lines.
So what does it mean on seven? Like describe how hearing, vision and dental screenings are managed and are verified for required students. Like I got an, I just got a note from parents where this said your child have a dental and vision screening. Well, my child already had a dental and vision screening. Like I don't know why he's opted into screenings that I already did as a parent.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to pull up this ORS, this three, three, six dot two, one, one, cause it says provision screening by examination or dental screening information C. So let me look at that, um, three, three, six, dot two, eleven.
So maybe we need to get more specific, Shane, on some of these? Or what are you, what are you wanting to bring back?
I will go, I'm gonna just look at specifics. I guess what do we not already have a policy for? So do we have a policy for hearing and vision? We have a policy for the.
I didn't see one for hearing and vision. That's why I asked.
Infection and bloodborne pathogens communicable to zombies. I mean, we get, I mean, we could, I mean, like, I mean, they put it in writing for us. We could also, you know. The board wanted to have that in writing in the board, just what they said, that we do not hand out and will prescribe, you know.
But I'm trying to figure out, do we need that to be specific on here? I think we need to match like Jen is doing, like we have a policy coming up for communicable diseases. So does communicable diseases even need to be on here at all? Like. Can this be generic to what we don't have a policy following?
And that's what I'm trying to figure out. Like this first, this sentence here says the district shall maintain a written prevention-oriented health services plan for all students. The health services plans will. And then I think it just goes through. From head to toe, but I'm assuming it's doing. And then we're gonna, some of them do have policies that we're gonna be looking at, others do not. Um, or they, they cite, oh, go to this ORS.
Right, cause on this one it has very specific, or specific protocol. For, you know, for, for specific protocol. And here's this.
Seems like.
Then it'll say for specific protocol content. Look at this one.
Well, and I notated JHC is one that says student health services and requirements. So. I don't know if that piggybacks off of this, but it's not the same information, but it's titled the same with and requirements.
This is, I mean, to Steve's point.
So.
Unless it's in, this could be one where we don't have, we're not legally required to have these policies. I mean, must have looked wanted to.
And then we have one that's very specific to just like cold diseases or. Like infection control, blood and pathogens is the next one.
So is there maybe a way to do that to?
Well, they recommended that you get rid of JHC and get this one in place. Obviously you don't have to do that.
Right, but JHC actually talks about, oh yes, is the number of ner- like one registered nurse or school nurse. For every hundred and twenty-five medically fragile students. Well, that's not in this one.
Right.
One registered nurse or school nurse or licensed practical nurse under. Um, supervision of the registered nurse or school nurse for each nursing department student. And three, one registered nurse or school nurse for every two hundred and twenty-five medically complex students. None of that is in this. So why are we scratching all the nursing requirements? So I, I don't know how all these are supposed to come together and maybe it would be better fit if we try to sort out. Maybe like Steve said, we can scratch this one because we have all these to follow, but this is super generic. And then the ones that again, that JHC that we're wanting to delete is not in EBBA.
Then GB, EB is the one about communicable.
Right.
It's more like a specific for just that.
So I don't know if there's. Yeah, we have to stand. So. I mean, I don't know thoughts.
I, there's a thought. I mean, to Steve's point, he's like, you know what, scrap this thing. We have most, the rest of it in here, even though I know this is JHC is, um, like delete, but maybe we're not gonna delete that one. Is there a way to have like, um, you know, the, the district lawyer look through this and go. This is why you're supposed to have this right here, this part right here, blah, 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 whatever reason, right? That we're not seeing, that we're not thinking of.
The other policy, JHC or whatever.
Right. And just say, you know, are we missing something that we can't just scrap this and move on? I don't know. That's.
It just, all of these cite the same OAR. All the way down. It's not any, like, it's any house bill that referenced, but it just, it referenced one OAR. So. I don't know if maybe.
It comes down to this ORS one.
Right, but the reason we're, we're scratching or changing these is due to one OAR. But what about all the other existing? OARs and, you know. Are there any?
I guess for me. If we can scrap this because it's just pretty general, lots of loose terminology. I would like to have maybe legal look at it and make sure that I personally am not missing something like. Hey Jen, you totally missed the, the mark on this one. This is exactly why they have it, wha- whatever. That's just me though. I don't know how.
I would rather have them look at it and say, maybe that I am. Have them look at it and verify and.
Well, again, this is another one, Steve, that I didn't see any highlights, underlines. Is it another ORS thing? That I missed, but there's no changes in language.
Yeah. That's the only thing that highlighted us. Um, what do you guys think, board?
Yeah, I think that's.
Policy, get legal, get pleased.
Yeah, and then we just need specifics. If there's certain services. Specific of what services those are.
Or if we can just. Scrap it all together.
Yeah, cause it's all somewhere else.
Yes, if it's on, you know, somewhere else. Thank you for that. You're, you're still up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I think we have EBBA. And it's infection, control and bloodborne pathogens.
So what, this is another one, Grant, down at the bottom. It says the exposure control plan shall be reviewed and updated at least annually. By who? Who updates this annually?
You know, good question. Where does it say that by?
The bottom paragraph on one dash two, the exposure control plan shall, where it's.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
If you go on, it says updated at least annually, but who is responsible for updating?
I'll find out for you.
That's everything. Would you have something?
Yeah, on, uh, this is the typo. Uh, on two dash two. The third paragraph down, it says the plan shall include training followed by an offer of immunization with Hep B. Vaccine and vaccination series for all staff who are required to provide first aid to students. And or, there's the and or, for all staff who have, and then there's a period. There shouldn't be a period. Who have, and then it's like. So just take that period out.
And just make it a part of the.
It's just a typo.
I see, yeah, for sure.
Nothing extreme, Grant.
No problem. Okay. Okay, we're moving on to a different letter, GBEB. Communicable diseases in schools. Versus staff. So take a look at that one.
I had a question from a parent. Um, that asks that we not address this policy. Um, until the FERPA notices looked at. FERPA notice because it looks like. The GBEB. Disease number four refers to legitimate educational interest and this term is required to be defined in a FERPA notice and it's missing. Along with the school official. But not all school employees should have access to student records. Um, only I, I think what this is referring to is like if kids' names. You have to be careful with putting kids' names up. Like maybe initials or like not putting their first and last name or their first name up and it gets open on a computer.
Sure.
And then other people have access to it. The only people who should have access to kids' records are those, like their exact teachers or people who are working with them.
Right.
Cause it allows other people to know personal stuff. So there is this a major concern from a parent that I would like to meet with. To, to look at all of these and so.
You're talking about.
It is the first.
The next one too, right?
I thought we did the first one of this. That was part of last year at a school board meeting. They're about not get fixed.
Under FERPA thirty-four CFR ninety-nine. Is what Creek County School District uses to ensure.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four CFR ninety-nine. Is what Creek County School District uses to ensure student privacy of educational records. Which is more than grades. So.
So I don't know if that. And that was with the attorney last I knew.
So the question that I have written down, did we fix the FERPA notice? Because it previously did not define legitimate educational interest for school official. It just gave a notice about the link to the US Department of Education, but it did not. List any details.
I pulled up our FERPA notice. It doesn't have a date. It was adopted, so I wanna make sure that it's, it's the most updated one. So that's something we can bring back to make sure we get right.
Well, we owe that public credit follow-up to them. You weren't here, Dr. Skinner. I'm not looking at you.
Yeah, Grant, lucky for you. That is where I stopped off because I'm out of time. But because this is first reading, I figured I can make.
Yeah, no worries. Okay, are we gonna move on? You guys okay with that? Okay, GBEB dash AR and it's also communicable diseases in schools.
So I have a question on this one and it may be a law thing, it may be, but this. Policy seems to only relate to students. Why doesn't it relate? Cause the title is changing to communicable diseases in schools. Why does it only reference students? Why doesn't it reference teachers, staff, administrators? Like why is it only? Why is it only in language for students?
See three says for school employees lacking evidence of, I see that.
But in, in this top paragraph where there's all the defining, it only relates to students. But then why are we changing it to, we change it from staff to in schools, but then took staff out of it?
Down there, it says restrictible diseases at the bottom one. It says a student or employee.
That's the only place employee is referenced at the top paragraph where it says restrictible diseases and it's defined by.
And then number three where it says one, two, three, or four was changed to three. It talks about. School employees there.
I mean, we could always just add.
If you look at like three on the, on the next page, you want three, a student of an employee. So it's like, it gets to. You know, kind of relates to them, but I just don't know why it wouldn't be anyone in our schools. When we relate to all this language, it should relate to. Anyone who's in there.
Why can't you just strike out where it says?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, like, is there a reason? Yeah, can, can it just be, you know, anyone?
Then it says student or employee there as well.
Yeah, but it's like, it's very selective and who it, I don't know why, like Steve said, can it just be a generic term to like anyone in?
I had the same thoughts when I read that.
Cause we're also changing it to in schools, like it should incorporate everyone, but it kind of breaks it up like you're.
Yeah, yeah. It did strike out, yeah, the child. And number five, it comes back and says exclusive standards for student or employees from school or.
Yeah.
Brought it back there again.
So I just don't know if we can make that like. Yeah, where it's all the same.
Yeah, for sure.
And then on page two. Two dash three, that it's number two is strike and then we have three that becomes two. In kind of the middle there, it says unless the local health officer, who is that? Wouldn't that be a school nurse?
They're finding that OAR, it's the uh, local uh, health department in our case. So it'd be Katie Plumb, the health department director.
Okay, so could we put local health department? Because then we have in that same paragraph, go to the end, the administrator or designate. Who is the designate? Is that again, the local health?
Uh, I only have the answer. Well, it refers, that refers to schools because it says may report their occurrence to the local.
Cause it lists local health officer next. So it says where Steven's reading, the administrator may request the local health officer to make a dis. To make a determination. So that would be an administrator calls the health department. Am I understanding that right? And then they give the guidance?
We did a lot of that during uh, COVID. A lot of where they would be looking at cases and then advising what we had to do, whether we could open or not. So I don't know. But, but yeah, that's.
So I, I would have the same question with this designate. So if the disease is reportable, the administrator or designate. May report the occurrence to the local health parents. Are you saying you didn't then, didn't have administrators handle it?
It'd probably be the school, I'm just thinking of situations, probably the school nurse. Um, if they're dealing with a family that has some, some side or, you know, some disease that we need to report. Some side it's or you know, some disease that we need to report, they would, they would then report to the the health department.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's like, yeah, it's, yeah, whoever the typically, if it's a health emergency or something going on, your designate is gonna be your school nurse. Who's working and and has background information.
So and then down at the bottom of that page two, three, where it says reportable diseases notifications, number one, all employees shall comply with all reporting measures. Adopted by the district, where is this? What did we adopt? And with all rules set forth by Oregon Health Authority, Public Health Division and Local Health Department, so. I would just be curious, where is what we adopted and what is it? If that is very vague, that all employees shall comply with all reporting measures adopted by the district, well. What did we adopt and where is it? And how do all employees know that they are in compliance with it? That's a very vague statement that we're asking all employees to.
So like if they went to a third world country, brought something back with them.
Right.
Think they would know to report, hey, I came down with malaria.
Right, well, that's the, and I don't know because it says that that the district has adopted, adopted by the district, so I'd like. To know what is it that we adopted and where do all employees find that?
Yes, I I would find, I thought my head, I guess would be the staff handbook that everyone looks through. This is all connected behind the scenes, but I'd want to make sure I have good information to give you, so that's something uh, we can work with and get to you.
Okay. And then I have one more on the back page, that's three dash three. So in, again, equipment and training, so number one, the administrator or designate. Shall determine what equipment and or supplies are necessary, in particular classrooms or other settings in order to prevent disease transmission. I don't feel not to put administrators down or a designate, but shouldn't this be someone in healthcare? I mean, really, shouldn't that be the school nurse?
My guess would be that that would be who the designate is.
So I would like to see administrator be removed.
Yeah, school nurse.
Where it's not on the shoulders of an administrator to be the one that determines what equipment or supplies are necessary, I just. They don't have that health background and I don't know that that's fair to put on their shoulders when we have.
A good principle, but yeah, no, I will.
I don't know that he wants to determine how to prevent or create a disease, you know, from being transmitted.
I I I think in reality, that's all that's designated school nurse, but but yeah, what I hear from the board getting specific uh, is is a priority, so we can definitely. Uh, adjust the language there.
Possessing too.
So that's, yeah, so I I circled two, so two says the administrator designate shall consult with the district school nurse. So it makes it sound like the administrator or the designate is not the school nurse. Or other appropriate health official to provide special training and methods of protection from disease trans, from disease transmission, so. It it's just. It's written in a way that a designate then is not a healthcare per person, you know, cause now the designate and the administrator is going to a healthcare person.
Cause we we certainly want people that are informed, making making these judgment calls around health healthcare issues, so.
Yeah. On the first page, it's restrictable diseases and it lists out all of. Uh, and then you go down to the next page, the the new number two, administrator shall exclude, which is said for student if. Exposed to, and it gives a partial list. Of those same respectable, what's an excludable disease versus a restrictable disease? I would assume it would be the same.
A list should match.
The same list, maybe, I don't know.
You're talking about on the back, right?
Paragraph there. Partial list of the what's up in the first part, in the first page.
You question, it's like, what's the difference? Why is restrictable list versus excludable list?
Is that I can exclude you for this, but if you hit one of these over here.
Restrict you, and what does that mean to restrict versus to exclude? It's a good question.
Yeah, it's a good question. What's the difference between restrictable and excluded? We'll find out.
I think that they would be the same, but I'm.
You go toxigenics and ester coli, it's restrictable.
I thought you were speaking a different language.
For county school district policy. And and this would be one that we'd probably want to get help.
So it just was odd that you had different lists and different things and they appear to be the same. Clear you for one thing and restrict.
You guys good to move on to the next? So now he says, okay. We've got two point two point nineteen and we're talking about HIV AIDS and HBV. And they're also recommending that we delete this.
So this is, yeah, again, I don't know where this.
It goes somewhere.
Goes.
That's the question, yeah. They they said, they say. Yeah, it's the same statement on everyone, so we'll we'll find out for you. Why, like, if get rid of this, where does this go?
Yeah, they also cite that same O R O R five eight one zero two 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 zero, so that would be where we'd want to look.
Then.
Figure out what the legislature did on that one.
Joel, I have again the same one, I know it's up for deletion, but in paragraph two, it says the district recognizes a staff member has no obligation under any circumstances. To report a condition to the district and the staff member has a right to continue working. So I don't understand why this doesn't apply on the last policy we just reviewed. If it's this way for staff members, why is it not that way for children? And why don't they have the option to continue learning? Why are they then excluded or restricted?
Yeah.
So I'd like to know why this doesn't, if it applies to staff members, why it doesn't apply to.
Well, the only thing it does say is that they're trying to make this.
A reportable.
With with students as well, like this policy apply to students or or the one.
That's why they're deleting, is they're trying to combine it, which, okay.
They're trying, but that's the question is is where.
Where to go.
Where to go.
Yeah, for staff and students, and so we'll get that for you. Okay. All right, J H, student welfare.
I have this one, Grant, all sorts of marked up, so. I got a lot of questions on this one.
Yeah.
Let's start at the top, so it says the district provides supervision of students, such supervision does not include early mornings. Or the time following us usual departure. We specifically started before school care to accommodate our secondary. School kids being able to get elementary kids.
Got it.
You know, to school, so they have somewhere to be, and this policy specifically says such supervision does not include early morning.
Okay.
So I think that wording.
Question, and my thinking around that was cause um, that was something we put in place, I was wondering if that. Early morning would be a relative term, you know, what does early morning mean?
Right.
Five AM, cause we know that the doors open at eight and we provide supervision from eight to nine prior to school, starting at request of the school board. So so my my thinking there was early morning is just this.
Relative.
General term of, well, yeah, early morning, five AM, no, no one's there to supervise your kid, but we could definitely.
Because at an elementary level, we don't open our doors early at elementary, the doors are open for breakfast, which is a school sponsored activity, right? So that fits the policy, but this was like written.
Yeah.
In a general term, but we secondary and elementary, their difference in their schedules.
We could definitely get more precise with that language, if if that's what the board would like a a drop from.
Well, I think that originally happened because the the school busing times. And we had a lot of unsupervised kids, cause the elementary started late earlier than the middle.
The last sentence on that paragraph also says hours when supervision is available shall be included in student parent handbook.
Yes, I have a question, that. To check the handbook, I don't know, I didn't look at if the times are specific to each school or if it's a general. So I had that too, Steve, so it does kind of give you a caveat there at the end. Hours when supervision is visible shall be included in the student parent handbook, so. I don't know what our student handbook said, but now our student handbook needs to match this policy, if that's the case, and I don't know.
Each school has, as as you guys know, this year we did a different procedure with that handbook, where we have a a district one that's been reviewed over and over again. And then each school has a page, uh, one page insert that has staffing hours, all I could go in to make sure that. I know they each put in their hours, um, I'm not sure if each put in. Their hours and the their supervision, but that's something I can check and report back on.
Okay, and then. Yeah, I'm not sure, so and then on number one, it says maintaining a safe school environment, and then it says designated personnel. Why doesn't that say maintenance? Will be responsible for periodically inspecting the physical condition of all equipment, buildings and grounds, I mean, does anyone else but? Do you designate someone other than maintenance to do that?
Yeah, there's uh, there's, I believe. It'd be awesome if Lila was here, uh, but as Lila in this evening, I know there are quarterly safety checks that are done by a building level team. That includes administrators and maintenance.
Okay.
Um, so that's what's, that's what happens in in practice. To to your point, it is led by the maintenance um, staff, so it's it's. Whatever you, whatever you feels best, uh, but it's typically a team that does a quarterly uh, safety inspection.
Okay. And then on number three, it says providing safety education to students as. Blah blah blah, but not limited to, we crossed out laboratory courses and science, and then we also crossed out professional technical shop. Courses, why are we removing that we're providing safety in those two classes?
To science, I I think it's just the whole science room.
So we have separate labs than our rooms, is that what you're telling me?
Well, some courses, some science courses are considered lab courses, like uh. Biology or uh, chemistry would be very, or it's a lab science. Where other courses like uh, physical science isn't necessarily considered lab science. But it it, so I I I think keeping it a science encompasses all those classes.
Okay, so it could incorporate just science in general.
Yeah.
Okay, so what about shop courses? Why is that one?
You know.
Don't call him shop.
Yeah, shop. I think is um, a term that we probably had when we were in school, you had shop class, now they're they're referred more to like CTE courses where you have.
So maybe we need CTE added as opposed to professional technical, cause I don't know what that is.
Yeah.
So this should really be CTE.
Yeah, I think CT is kind of more. Yeah, change professional tech to career and technical education.
And then this could be like what the, one of the policies that Steve brought up, but where you have the striking under five. Where staff observing suspicious strangers, loitering in or near school buildings or sitting in parked automobiles nearby shall notify the principal. So to me, why would you not report that? But then it seems like it was added to this bottom paragraph. But then again, we start getting into designate, it's so it's, to me, it's like, I feel like. Buildings should have a protocol as to, you know, how this stuff is reported, so. I'm assuming those, that sentence was struck to be added to the paragraph below. So but it's written again, kind of like the healthcare one, the principal or designate will notify law enforcement, so. Are you saying there's somebody other than the principal, or why can't anyone talk to law enforcement? Like, this seems like you have to be specific to two people, but then go to law enforcement instead of just. Say something, say something.
I've got a couple suggested revisions for this one, um, the first one, uh. Jen pointed out that that paragraph, it says school personnel will be concerned about school safety issues. We thought that was a weird, insane, so we wanted to, uh, a one, one proposed revision be school personnel will investigate all known school safety issues. Um, and then on the designate piece, I believe why designate is in there is because the principal is not always in the building. And when the principal is gone, they typically designate their assistant principal, so that's where that would come come in, but.
Gonna say administrator?
What if like down Kessel?
Yeah.
Like, why can't like? So and so from science, call officer, whoever at their school and say, hey, there's a car parked outside my window, it's been here and this guy hasn't moved, like.
Yeah.
It's saying like, it's almost like you're creating a protocol they have to follow, instead of just saying, see something, say something. Like, it should be that cut and dry, like, it shouldn't have to go through a chain if you're worried about the safety of our students. So my only concern is that this policy lines out for employees to then follow these steps, instead of just being like, hey. Find your school resource officer and tell them.
Yeah, totally.
All such circumstances to principal and will notify law enforcement.
But then it says the principal will notify law enforcement, so it's like they have to go through an extra step, instead of just being able to notify them themselves.
I'm wondering if uh, potentially uh, Lila's. Lila's our our guy who goes to all the conferences around school safety.
Could it be and or Joel?
You know, I'm not opposed to an and or.
Last, you can call your principal, but if you're not, you can just call your SRO.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it would just be a a building stacking conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah. The power of your s- the the staff too.
If you see something.
If you think it's that emergency, pay care of it, don't, yeah.
That's why I don't want to have a policy that restricts that, this says, well, you do it this way, and it's two people down the line, now you're too late, you needed one person.
Exactly. So let's um, let's bring this back with some suggested language, uh. Have an and or and or.
So the bottom paragraph, Joel. Where it says students will be instructed on personal safety and that of others in accordance with the state health standards. When are students taught the state health standards? What are they?
Health class, uh, so uh, typically.
So what do we do at an elementary level? You think that's taught at fifth grade, cause they don't have health before fifth grade, so what is K through four do?
So they have the great body shop, um, is what is used to teach those health standards.
At K through four?
Each each grade level has uh, different booklets.
So you think those booklets cover the state health standards?
Uh, yeah, well, priority ones. And little plug, fun fact, any community member, including the board, we have all those packets right back here, if you want to look at what those look like at any point.
And it's called the great function.
Great Body Shop.
And then in that same paragraph, it says students will be instructed to tell or report to teachers, their parents or missing guardian foster. You know, the whole word, but who could potentially be a guardian of a student. And then it says law enforcement or school security personnel.
So are the teacher manuals back with the help?
No, another, another fun fact, uh, so if you remember, this was uh, years ago. Uh, there were some things that were, um, whether, I don't know who's the community or. Said these teacher manuals, they don't mind the curriculum, the great body shop, but the teachers manuals had some strange lessons or something. So we actually got rid of all the teachers manuals, so all we use, all our teachers have, all anyone has is that actual booklets. This is bonus. Yeah, it was, it had different lessons and whatnot, so yeah, we we just have.
Updates from the Oregon Department of Education that were.
I think we kind of covered it already, so I think this is kind of going with the same one.
Uh, we'll bring back language based on on their suggestions to.
JAC.
Yep.
So this JHC, is this on your list with the EBBA to see why it's not, where it moves over? Do we need to go, do you have more on this one? How, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's being deleted, cause it's being added, but it's that same. Terminology, and I tried to reference, like, some of this, there's like three of them that do carry over to that policy. But then the rest of the list doesn't, so I I'm, it could be in one of, like Jen said, one of these other ones as well. So.
I think you have to have a degree for this, honestly. A degree in policy instead of things, yeah. Law, law, right, yeah, right there.
Okay.
Okay, I have questions on this one too.
Okay, the immunization, school sports participation?
So under school sports participation, that a student participating in extracurricular sports, grade seven through twelve is required to submit an appropriate. School sports pre-participation examination, hope you go down to the footnotes, that is the OSAA form. But OSA does not govern our middle school sports, as far as I know, they're done through the school, so I think that should say nine through twelve. But I could be wrong.
No, you're.
If you're gonna go with the footnote of OSAA.
Yeah, if you're gonna go with that footnote, yeah.
That's what it references on that pre-participation examination three, the footnote is the OSAA form.
But could we still use the same form even though we're. I'm just thinking we might wanna get, yeah. In case the middle school needs to have that.
But your doctor can give you, like, I've had this where the doctor signed off on a physical, and then it's come back to me that, oh, we need this form. But I think the middle school should be able to accept a health form, right, from a doctor? Does it have to be an OSA form that doesn't generate or regulate their sports?
The only which you might run into is eighth grade students who are then practicing in the summer to freshman year. So maybe six.
But they have to have the high school one at that.
Yeah, then you give them, make sure that they get the high.
It's not that they can't all use the same form, it's just OSA doesn't govern our middle school sports, so I think the middle school. Although that form works, they should be able to also accept a healthcare, you know, their general. Clear to play sports.
The question to you, don't we have sixth graders do sports too now?
We do.
We do.
That's, and some of that's through parks and recs, and some of that is through the middle school, I think, so basketball.
And I thought, well, I'm not, you know, maybe they've changed. Things since.
Tackle for middle school sixth grade is part. But cross country is.
The sixth grade too, right?
So I don't know if this name is place six through twelve, I don't know.
With another footnote.
I don't know, I mean, Anna has a point, it's not that they can't all use that form, it's just OSA doesn't. Govern through our middle.
Best to have a six through twelve, you know, the same form. But we can, we can dig into that one.
And then in that same paragraph, three, at the bottom, it lists one, two and three. I'm just curious, why isn't it one, two or three? Why doesn't three trump them all? Three says the student has received a medical release. Form from a healthcare professional, this is off the concussion protocols, I don't know why three doesn't trump one and two. Well, it goes, one is right here around the front, and then it lists two and three, but I think it should be one, two or three. Because three, if you're medical, if a doctor has cleared you to play. One and two wouldn't be a factor. Okay, it seems like it should be one, two or.
Seems like, yeah, that's what I put to, medical release, if the medical release from the healthcare.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Yeah, but it's saying it's like you need that too, and I don't know why three isn't enough to stand alone.
You've got a medical release, then obviously you don't know.
Right, it's saying that all of those need to be met, but Steve on two, it says and, and then it said number three, and to me, it seems like it should be one, two or. Three, not the and after two.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
And there isn't a footnote. So Anna is right, number three references footnote seven, and we don't have a footnote seven, so maybe.
Very bad, small, small.
Talks about what a healthcare. I mean, so, yeah, if they, yeah, if they sign the release, obviously there's no longer, like, you know, signs. There, I, I read it like that too, Justin, I.
Well, it's just something maybe to have looked at. Cause I would say that your doctor trumps a coach, but maybe a coach knows more than the doctor, I don't know. You know, I don't know how that works in the concussion world.
Okay, was there anything more on that? Immunization and sports, or school sports participation one? No, okay, so we have notes on that one, checking to, thank you.
Thank you, we're all on the same page.
On the same page, okay. Uh, we kinda talked about this a little bit, but JHCC two point two point twenty-three. Is the communicable disease dash students.
So this would be another one, where did it go? It has the same explanation for why you're deleting.
I do have one question on that, if it's when it's combined with the other one, it says. Define, uh, reportable diseases. Are we gonna go back to design for the flu, COVID, or are they gonna start doing the COVID thing again?
Where'd you see that?
Uh, one, two, three, and the third paragraph down, it says when are we, uh, strictable or reportable disease? Uh, define disease, like what, what kind of disease? Like the COVID thing became ridiculous, and now the CDC has said it's nothing more than the flu, so. I think that's starting to circle around to be something else, and then if there's. Different swine flu or bird flu or. Now it's hard to make, be specific with the COVID stuff.
So Fran. Um, I don't know, but it says cross-reference on the back page, that might be where it went. EBC, EBC, we don't have that one, but that might be where it went.
That's where we can look.
I don't know, but it says reference cross.
Yeah, the student one actually lists the diseases where this one does not.
Right, you were talking about the JHC or, uh.
The last one became communicable diseases in school, so instead of staff, we had communicable diseases for students, this is what I was getting at. Why do we get rid of staff? We have one for student, and then we have this like collective one that randomly states.
It merged it, but. Kind of.
I just think if you have them for students, why do not have them for everyone in the school, you know, administrators, teachers. Staff, yeah.
I think all these are the same of combining.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
So just one had the crop.
So are we just, on these last two, are we just looking to see where they went?
I think we need to see that they went somewhere, yes. Cause my guess is we got rid of the staff and the student one, right, and I think they're becoming one, it's just which one.
Circle back around too about that posting the fall, we have, did you say fifty-five and Q? To get it out for the public to review those, is that a board vote, or is that something the district does, so? And I don't know, because Ben LePine, there's fourteen days, Portman, there's twenty-one days, but we need to probably figure out. An amount of days for the. Cause I feel like I don't even have enough time, I spent like fourteen hours going through this. And I still don't get for the lot, I mean, we get these at the very, it's really hard to like cross run. It takes a lot of time.
They're looking at it to help us.
Yeah, some say like Melinda, if we, like, if one was here and we read our policies and we have these kind of questions, it's really, it'd be nice to like. You know, yeah, bounce that off her.
What I'd like to do is get together with, uh, Dr. Skinner, Tammy, Melinda and the team and come up with. The process that encompasses all these pieces that you guys talked about, an extended timeline for public review, uh, our local attorney. Reviewing all these and present that at the November board meeting, um, I think for all the current policies, we've given them, uh. Today, so, and then they wouldn't be adopted until the next board meeting, so that would give that two week window for anyone that would want to review those.
Yeah, that would work.
So.
They could send like a, uh. Like an email, or do they need?
That would probably be the.
That way you have everything you had to.
Yeah, it would be nice to, yeah, be able to look at.
The more time that we have and questions from everyone. More opportunity, yeah. We have to, to get.
So we have time for the public to review any of the policies that we've talked about tonight, uh, and then we can. Your question was, how does the board get feedback from? The public on these current policies?
I just wanna make sure it's clear to the public how they can get a voice in, because we don't allow public comment at these work sessions. When it comes to the policies, so like Shianne brought up, in other districts. And now that we learned from OSBA that, hey, you can actually, you know, turn these into. Language that fits your. Mr. Population, your district of people. Now, we should be hearing from them some way, shape or form. So I just.
Yeah, so between now and then, you know, we don't have another meeting, so we could. Unless you guys want to create. Yeah, so the community can always, there's no rules, you can all, you can always email the board, your, your contact information is on the website. And then I think at the November meeting, we can present, uh, an updated process on how we can go about this. Does that fit what you guys are thinking?
Yeah, but I have one more question about the OSBA, so this year. Have we paid a total of ten thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars to OSBA just for this year? Cause I have a, we all got how much money? I don't know if this is annual, or if this is just this amount this year, because this doesn't have any amount of money, how much do we pay for PACE insurance? And in the research I did today, I, I was shocked to hear, shocked to hear him say that. If we broke away from buying OSBA policies, that we could still get PACE insurance, because. That, that's news to me, cause I thought they were a package deal. But it doesn't say on here how much we paid PACE insurance, but it would almost be better off to. I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing this out there, just look at cost for like. How much we just have, I mean, we have Melinda.
So your first question, um, that, that ten thousand number, I believe, my understanding is that's the annual fee, so that would be for the whole, for the whole year.
But it doesn't include our PACE insurance.
No, that's a completely, they are affiliated, but the PACE insurance is a completely different thing, and I'm looking it up right now.
So we could disassociate with OSBA and still have PACE insurance?
Yes, but, and I, I would like to explain that a little bit. You know that the policies are the board's policies. But like you said, it's a lot of work, it's, there's a lot of legal stuff, and so the board. Sometime before anyone who was even before you on the board at some point, years and years and years ago. Decided to hire Pace to be the attorneys, basically, it's like a team and a, currently happens to be Spencer. To be the ones who say, alright, we will give you suggestions on how your policies could look, and then it's up to you as. The local school board to take those suggestions and decide if you want to use these the way that they are, or. Do something different, and if you as board members want them to say something different, you can propose different language, and then we as employees. Help you to get that into policy how you want by talking to attorneys, et cetera. So Pace really is something that you as the board can choose to use or not use. So it's, it's that, you know.
Case of the insurance. And OSBA is the policy. Okay, okay.
So as far as, so I'm writing down, there's another policy place, it's national. Because when Pace merged with OSBA or we came together in two thousand and eighteen. There was some law that was passed, I don't know what law it was, but. If you're gonna have school insurance, you can't cross state lines, so we can only have Pace. So. There just seemed like, it seems like they have, they have the market cornered, I don't even know how that is legal. I think the only school district that's broken away from Pace is Baker City and that car, Baker, and that caused like a huge uproar. Now they're really following that completely, but like, we are only allowed to have Pace.
Pace is really the only option. There aren't other insurance companies who are willing to offer coverage, and Pace is, um. Cooperative, so it's, it's like a not-for-profit type organization that was built. By. Uh, you know, school districts coming together, not necessarily school districts, but those who represent school districts coming together and building this organization. Yes, so Pace is, is our, really our only option.
So Anna, on the money, we got that email that stated. All of our costs are going up for our dues, so is that only one of the numbers on here? Is that all of these are going up?
Oh, is it ten thousand for OS?
For OSBA, the email we got, what was it? It, it was a drastic jump. We got an email from OSBA that said our membership dues were being raised, they raised them and.
Hundred dollars a year, and then they want.
Legislative branch show paper going up.
And it's like over five years.
Over five years. So there are four things that we've paid to, that we've paid to OSBA so far this year.
But do you know, are they all going up?
I didn't see the email, but I'm assuming if they're talking about dues, then they're just talking about one of those four things. That we paid this year were five thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars. We pay them fifteen hundred and sixty dollars just to host our policies on a website. Because our, the way, our website, we don't have the ability to do like a search within the policy language, and so they. Really, it's just that they have these websites that have. Structure, yeah, and so we pay them fif- fifteen hundred and sixty dollars just to do that for us, but we give them the policies and they just hope, they just put them on their website. Uh, we paid them six hundred dollars for. Access to policies. So that way they give us, every time they do their, um, legislative review and they create new policies. They give us an online platform where we can go look at what those updates are, otherwise we would have to do that ourselves. And then we pay them two thousand one hundred sixty dollars for policy plus. Policy plus is where they pick our policy and apply those recommended changes and send it to us. Okay, so it's a service.
So they do take the policy that we wordsmith, update it and send it to us, cause he specifically said they don't do that.
But they don't review it. They don't review it for legality. Is, I think is what he was saying.
So we get their stuff, we change it, it's not legal, they don't back it, and we give them all this money. And then they take all of our money and put things and create all this stuff that doesn't align with our values.
So Tammy, I.
And I don't, I don't agree, I want, I, I should have asked him specifically, but I do believe they are state and federally funded. They are taking our tax dollars, he said they did not, but I know, cause I looked on their site, they take our tax dollars. And they have ten million dollars in their account, and they are allowed to invest that and make money off of our tax dollars. And then they want us to give them an increase. Didn't, and that's not true.
My overall question when asking OSBA to come was exactly that, so. If we are getting these policies and we change. And then or, and these small adjustments, but OSBA doesn't recognize that. And say they send a change down that edits a different paragraph that we didn't change, and it says the only change to this policy is this word. In this paragraph, well, it didn't accept the changes we had previously, so that is my concern. When we go through these massive policy adoptions and readings. So that is my concern when we go through these massive policy adoptions and readings. That that isn't being watched by anyone, so you almost have to have the previous. Policy where we made these changes. Like the and and the or and what other small things, and then you attach that with the new one. That O S B A is proposing, only this one word is changing, because. That gentleman specifically said they're not tracking individual districts, and my concern is that. We are adopting or we adopt something, cause we're like, oh, it's just one word and it's. The, you know, or there's a typo and it's this, but we actually edited paragraph two and they're not even looking at that. So now we've just completely, you know, backdated or backtrack what you wanna say, you know. What we had done the previous one, so I think moving forward in these meetings, we would need the copy.
Let me just interject, because that's what the Policy Plus does for us. Is rather than just them taking their, is that what you're gonna say, Tammy?
A little bit.
But interject if I miss something, um so when I get the policy changes from O S B A. They're formatted in a way that I can't edit it and apply like the red strikeout and the blue language, sometimes I can't, I can't always. So what I do is I download our current policy that we have on our website, okay? And I look at what O S B A has sent us as a change, and I apply that to our policy. To make sure there's no other changes that have been missed. Then, once you guys adopt a policy, we make all the edits that we want. Then I send that to O S B A and say, hey, our board approved this at our board meeting on this date. Please upload this to our website, and then they apply all those edits that I make. Then what I do is once they email me back and say, okay, I've uploaded these policy changes to your website. I go back and look at that policy that they updated and make sure that they capture all our changes.
You should be paid a spike of two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. I mean, really, that's what you're doing.
It's just because there's. See, we went back and forth four times on, and it's moment, it's just, there's so many changes.
Well, there was an issue last year prior to you getting here, there was several different along policies uploaded.
She's working like major hours.
So that's why I'm saying, like, we have, there are other options, like the School Board for Academic Excellence, it's a national program. There's also a school board uh association, the Community School Board Association that. Is trying, that is opening up to take more rural schools with rural values, I think Grants Pass is part of it, Hermiston. And they're kind of bucking O S B A and saying, no, you're not gonna apply all of these Portland policies to our districts. So I think, I do believe that the Community School Board Association still uses some of O S B A's policies. But I was told that the the only reason they use O S B A policies is because if they break away from them, they can't get insurance. So I'm getting all these different.
Joel could come back with those.
Seems to me to be like they take a bunch of money and they use it for things that don't align to our values. Uh like pretty much every policy we go through doesn't, the ORSs don't line up, things are wrong, I mean, we've had nothing but issues, so. I mean, I would personally like to join the Community School Board Association that's down in Grants Pass and Hermiston and really good. The Community School Board Association, because when you do that and O S B A and O D E pushes all of this really weird. Crap like bizarre committees and different things, districts can stand up and say, you know, this doesn't align with our values. O D E and part of O S B A, and we we don't wanna do this, but it it's in numbers, it's very hard for little districts to go around and. And fight some of this really weird bizarre stuff they're trying to push, push down on roads.
That would be a completely a board decision, and we can bring back what options exist.
I mean, I know that the School Board for Academic Excellence, if you're a part of the Community School Board Association, you have access to all their policies. It's a national organization that is connecting with other states, probably like Texas and Florida. I don't know specifically, but I'm saying it's worth looking into rather than just having O S B A, I mean, I'm pretty sure Spencer gave me some wrong information. I'll have to go back and double check that, but like, it just seems bizarre to me to continue to throw good money after bad to like. I have to go back and wordsmith everything ourselves.
A lot of the larger districts write their own policies, so that that it isn't just a one.
So Madam Chair, could we maybe look at options for not only a policy procedure? But also what we could, what are our options like Joel throughout there? Like some larger districts write their own policies, like what would that entail, is that, I mean, that's quite a process, you know, but. You know, and could we get the numbers for the O S B A and what is being charged and how that's going up? It sounds like Dr. Skinner, you did attend that, we got the email, and I thought it was like fifteen percent. And it's going up that much over five years.
Depending on the size of the district, right, so everybody. Well, it's just like any budget, right? I mean, they've got a slew of things that they they need to pay for too, but it to your point. I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed to looking at different options, but I think it's too much to ask to have anything ready for November. I mean, I think this is something that, you know, to give time to really look through. Dwindle down to, to get all the information, and maybe, you know, it's something that you guys um send your questions to, to make sure everything's answered by, you know, Joel and Dr. Skinner. Um and then we we look at that at a later date, just I I worry that November's gonna get stacked is my.
Yeah, the policy process, I think we can bring back by November, but in terms of like a deep study and tell all the options out there, that might uh that might have to go.
One more thing, could you just bring back if we can get PACE insurance without O S B A? Cause if we can't get insurance, we can't put our district in that kind of. Yeah, ponder where. Yeah, so I just.
We we certainly wanna make sure that we're not setting the district up with this giant liability to get. But um those sort of logistical questions or technical questions, we can get get answers to.
Everybody, thank you so much, appreciate all of you and all of your hard work and everything that you guys have put into this, so. Uh without further ado, we're gonna adjourn this meeting.